Welcome all to our May 4th call work session. And I'm going to call the session to order and ask the clerk to please call the room.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Okay, we do have a call in present, so it is time.
You froze on us, Mayor.
Yes, in the council chamber tonight. Thank you all for tuning in and wanting to be a part of your budget discussions. So at this time, I'm going to put this in the hands of our city manager, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, the purpose that we're here for tonight is our first call work session on budget. And we'll utilize this time to hear from-
Fun stuff, indeed.
Yeah. Aren't you? Hear from both outside agency executive directors-
May the fourth be with you, my friend.
Yes, you as well.
And also-
Be careful, head back up. It looks like there's supposed to be some bad weather coming in.
I will.
They canceled the- normally I do a livestream on the-
Mr. Reynolds, we can hear you.
Oh, hold on.
Okay. All right. To hear from our executive directors of our outside agencies that the city funds, and also-
Because of the bad weather, we went ahead and canceled that, so I'm off the hook for that. So I get to sit here and do this tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, there. Hey, Mr. Reynolds, so we can hear you. All right. He just needed-
He muted now, so. And also to give internal department heads the opportunity to speak with you all if they chose, based on the request that they put forth in their budget request that was not included in the proposal that I shared with you. And from our looks on the screen, we have a number of those that want to be able to do that, and I'm glad to see that. So we'll start with our outside agency executive directors, and in no particular order, we'll just start with the library folks, since they were the first ones to get here. But I'm going to ask Stephen Wiggum, interim executive director of the Twin Lakes Library, to come to the podium, and he has some folks with him that he'll introduce, and then share some information with you about what's going on in the library and take any questions that you have. Stephen, thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay on this? My name's Stephen Wiggum. I'm the interim library director at Twin Lakes Library System. Working where Mr. Hauser worked for quite some time, about six and a half years, and it's nice to see all of you, Mayor Copeland, and all the council members, and Mr. City Manager. I appreciate it very much. And my friends with me who are with me tonight are our board chair, Ms. Revel Pogue. I'm sure a lot of you know Revel. And we have the library director, executive director of the Middle Georgia Regional Library System, Jennifer Lotzenheiser. And we have Dana Portwood, who is the acting branch manager at the- for the Twin Lakes Library System. And they all are here with us tonight, and they'll answer questions as well, if you have any. So I have- they have a copy of the budget that we had-
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'll be glad to answer any questions or-
And I- Introduce Julie also on the screen. Introduce Julie on the screen, too.
Okay, good. Would you like me to-
Introduce Julie. She's with us.
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry. I forgot. My great friend Julie Walker, excuse me, the state librarian, so from Georgia Public Library Service. Thank you, Julie. I'm sorry. I had everybody's name written down, so thanks for joining us as well. And my friends are all with us here tonight to answer any questions you have, and feel free to ask, and myself as well.
One of the things that I asked Stephen to share with y'all some information on is the Twin Lakes Library Board has voted to join the Middle Georgia Regional Library. And I thought you all might want some information about that. And so, Stephen, if you'll just kind of summarize a little bit about what that means, you or Revel, or both of you together, and then if there are any questions that council has, based on that, you can answer those questions. But as far as budgets are concerned, Stephen's budget is the same as it was last year, and y'all have seen that proposal, but you can certainly ask any specific questions about that as well. So if you'll just share a little bit about-
Okay.
-the vote to join the Middle Georgia Regional System.
Well, Mr. Hauser, as you know, was the director here, as I said, for almost seven years, six and a half years. He's an excellent library director. And when he went to a new position at West Georgia Library in Carrollton, Georgia, based out of Carrollton, I was asked to come back. I was the interim director for 10 months in 2014, and came to a lot of Monday morning meetings over here with Mr. Gerald, and very good meetings. So we hired Mr. Hauser, and he did an excellent job, I think. I think all of us agree with that. So the first, when I was asked to come back, just to be the interim director, temporary director, I was asked by Ms. Walker to come up here and by the board, Ms. Revel Pogue and her people, to- the first step was to see if we could find a new director. And we put out a search for a new director, and we had some applications, and some good people applied, but none of them seemed to be quite the fit for your library system. And also, for various reasons, for funding reasons, the state money paid for the position of the library director only. That was the only personnel they paid for. And we also got, which we appreciated, of course, the people of Baldwin County and Milledgeville. And we also from state, you had some system services grants funding that helped finance other aspects, operational aspects, and then you got money for books and materials. So when we did not, the transition committee that looked for a new director chose not to go with the ones that we had talked with and went over their information. The second option was to consider merging with another library system. And the key candidates were Middle Georgia Regional Library System, based out of Macon, and the Azalea Regional Library System, which is based out of Madison, Georgia. And they both made presentations to us, and the board chose to go with the Middle Georgia Regional Library System, among other reasons, including the excellent presentation that Ms. Lotzenheiser gave to the board that day. It was outstanding. And also, 20 years ago, in 2001, you were a member for quite some time of that region, regional system in Macon. And the Twin Lakes Library System was created in 2001. And at that time, it was somewhat, I think Ms. Walker could probably correct me on this, but I think it was somewhat encouraged at that time for people in single counties, if they had the financial means of a certain amount, they could go and be a single library system. And several were created that way. And but at this time, the board decided to go with the merger with Middle Georgia Regional Library System. If I may ask, that Julie Walker just mentioned a quick thing about the mergers that have gone on in the state that she's had experiences with.
Certainly, I'll be glad to talk about that. We have had, this is the third merger that we've had in the last couple of years, as financial situations have tightened up a little bit, and as some of our smaller, single-county systems have realized that by joining with a regional system, a neighboring regional system, realize some economies of scale, joining together with several other counties to make purchases, to pay for the administrative operation of the library system, such as the human resources, the finance aspect of running the system, the cataloging of the materials, the IT services, can all be shared among counties, so that one individual county doesn't bear the burden of paying for those programs and services. They also can join their funding together to hire performers for summer reading, to purchase collections of eBooks. So it has become fairly well-accepted around the state that by joining together, the library systems all benefit, while the local funding still comes to the library. That local funding is now paying for staff members who are public-facing, who are helping with story times, or presenting programming, or waiting on customers who come into the library, rather than that administrative overhead that you've been responsible for up until now. So in this circumstance, the Middle Georgia system will take care of all of those things out of their Macon headquarters office, and your staff will be free to serve the people of Milledgeville and Baldwin County. So I was really happy to work with your board. They took this very seriously. They studied their options, and I was extremely happy that it was a unanimous decision, and they seemed very enthusiastic about joining the Middle Georgia system. The Middle Georgia system is an exemplary library system in our state. They do great things, and I think that it's a good decision for you all. I think you'll be extremely happy with this transition that will happen July 1st.
Thank you, Julie. I have Ms. Lotzenheiser standing here. I'd like quickly to say, and correct me if I say this wrong, we're still in, we're local, you're a local community library for all of Milledgeville and Baldwin County citizens, and your funding goes to enter our, I'll say our bank, into the bank the library's funds. And we pay $600 a year to be a member, which is almost, should we discount that a little better? But we scrape that up. But that's to be able to utilize these resources that Ms. Walker mentioned. And that does leave us where our funding is going to all of our public services and public library services, as we call it, and which are a number of great many things, which I won't go into that now. But it is to your benefit. I've worked at both single-county, as an interim director, I've worked at seven different libraries, and I've worked for a long time and retired from a multi-county library system in Eastman. You've probably heard of Eastman Oakmuggly Regional Library. And worked at single-county libraries, and worked at other multi-county libraries. And they're all interesting and all good libraries, but this was a good fit, I think, for your library. And I'd like Ms. Lotzenheiser to maybe give you some more detail of what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to come and share with you all today. I don't know, in being respectful of your time, that I could possibly add too much on what they have already shared about the structure of the system and how this all works cooperatively together. The only thing that I would add is that Middle Georgia Regional Library prides itself on being a community-centered library system. So each one of our libraries reflect the unique needs of their communities, and I want to assure you that your control and your voice in your local public library remains the same. You will still appoint members to the local library board. They will still govern the direction of your local library and have input into the services and things that are offered at your library. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear. I'm open to any questions that you might have.
What other libraries are included in the system?
Well, I'd like to go in alphabetical order, because it's easiest. Y'all will, for here on out, be first, because you're Baldwin. We have Bibb, Crawford, Jones, Macon, Twigs, and Wilkinson Counties. You will be provided, in the state, every library needs to be, have all of its services overseen by a licensed certified librarian. That is a profession within the state. You will have an administrative librarian who will visit your locations twice a week to serve that purpose. That will be no additional cost to you. That's included in the $600. So you'll remain compliant with that requirement at no additional expense.
Any questions for any of these library folks?
Just like to say that it's very exciting for us to be a part of this new library group, and very excited to see what new resources will be made available to the citizens of Milledgeville and Baldwin County because of this partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here tonight. And as we go through this process, if we have budget questions for you, we'll make sure that you get those, so you can get an answer back to us. But and you all are welcome to stay for the rest of the night if you'd like, or you can leave now. It's totally up to you, but-
Hank, can I say one thing just-
Sure.
I'm available, but I work up here like a schoolteacher 49%, but I come back and forth, and glad to be here when I'm here. And Mr. County Manager Griffith has my contact and information, my cellphone and email. Feel free to call with any questions at any time. He knows that.
We will.
But thank you all very much.
Thank you, Stephen.
It's an honor to be here. Thanks to all of you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, too. Next, we'll hear from Pamela Peake, the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club. Pamela, welcome. And just share with us what you would like to, and then we'll see if Mayor and Council have any questions for you.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank you all for your time, and thank you for having me. We are very thankful for the support that we received during the 2020 pandemic. All we're asking is that we maintain what we are currently getting from you all, as far as funding is concerned. But I do want to highlight some key things that we were able to do as a result of your support, and to send a great thank you out to you all. We were able to provide 121 days of in-person services to our youth despite the COVID pandemic. And I will say, in 2020, we were able to provide that successfully with no COVID-19 cases, with the exception of one adult that staff that contracted outside of the Boys and Girls Club. So we're happy in saying that, because that means that we were doing what we're supposed to do to make sure that our staff and our children were safe as we took the opportunity to care for them. We had 76 days of virtual activities that we were able to provide as a result on the times that we were closed. We also did 974 phone activity services. And you may ask, well, what is a phone activity that you're conducting with the kids? Well, it was entailed in the 1,666 wellness checks that we did with our families to make sure that our children was okay during the pandemic. And so an example of a phone activity will include, because we had to recognize that not all children had access to the internet, and not all children had access to computers. So we had to figure out a way to engage them in something positive as they were dealing with the pandemic, to make sure that we were reaching out to them socially and emotionally when it comes to their well-being. So for instance, one activity was, we gave them three items. One in particular was, if you had a pocket knife, a brand-new pair of Jordans, or a six-pack of bottled water, which one would you take with you if you were stranded in the jungle? And so the idea behind that was for them to think about survival skills, what would be beneficial. And so we were able to engage in a fun conversation with them on why they picked what they picked to take with them in the jungle. So we were being very creative in ways to reach out to our youth during the pandemic. And also, we were able to work with 179 volunteers during that pandemic. And I am happy to say that, in doing that, we were able to work with some of our local law enforcement agencies. We were also able to work with our fire department, who came in and literally helped when the children were not present on-site, to help in the distribution of snacks and foods to our families. And as a result of the support that we received from you all, we were able to provide 15,000-plus snacks to our youth throughout the year of 2020. We were able to serve more than 7,500 meals to families in the local community that we worked alongside our school system and served as a food hub and distributing food during the pandemic when school was shut down. We were also able to reach 417 different families, which was definitely a plus for us, where in the past, we usually run on average about 200-plus families in a given year. Different families is what I'm looking at as a whole. And so we were able to reach even more families as we tried to do everything we could to solidify the fact that we were supporting our communities even during this pandemic. I'm proud to say, when we look at Boys and Girls Club on a national level, we have over 4,000 different units in the nation, and we were among the 6% town rating in what we showed in reduction for membership, whereas we served a little over 300. The previous year, we got down to 294, which was great, as far as still doing everything we could to provide services to our youth. And as a result of your continued support, we saw roughly around an 11% reduction in funding across the board, because we were able to solidify funding from our city, and we were able to take advantage of some other resources that were available to us. We did get some cuts, but because we went after those additional resources to make sure that we didn't fall into a budget crisis, we were very thankful for that. And so on that note, I really would like to say thank you all for the continued support you have provided for us, and we ask that you continue to do so. We just want to maintain what you've already given us, and that is our hope. If anyone had, I do have a video that we will share with you all, a virtual video. And because this year, because of the pandemic things where it looked different, we sent our personal thank yous in the form of a video, and what you will get to see is the children in action, both in person and virtually, and you'll get to see some of those and some thank yous at the end regarding all of those that supported us as we moved through this pandemic and continue to move through the pandemic. Are there any questions?
Ms. Peake, I don't have a question, but I just have a statement. I would like to say, you're constantly telling us thank you. I would like to say, and the council would like to say, everybody would like to say, thank you all for everything that you all do for us with the children. Really, the Boys and Girls Club is a big asset to Milledgeville, and we appreciate. And you have really, really performed some miracles-
I appreciate it.
... with the children.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
I wish you would open up a little bit earlier, though, too.
I know. We're working on that. Still looking for more funding, but we'll take what we can get.
I got you. I got you.
Thank you, Dr. Lee, for that. You did so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Peake?
I too like, Dr. Lee, want to tell you thank you, too, for all that you do, Ms. Peake. You can stretch a dollar further than anybody I've ever seen. And we appreciate everything you do.
That has a lot to do with it. I definitely take advantage of my community resources. Ms. Gray will tell you that. I call them, I call people all across Milledgeville for everything.
I know.
It works, but it shows that we are a community, and it shows that they really care about our youth and where they are and where they would like to see them be. So I'm very thankful for all of my community partners that we've established.
Yes, and please do express to your board how much we appreciate them, because they are some dedicated people to your cause. They are.
I will definitely do that.
Ms. Shinholster, I didn't want to say that, but she sure can stretch a dollar. She can work you to death.
Well, Pamela, thank you for being with us. You're welcome to stay on the call, or you can go, whichever one you like. If we have any questions for you on your budget, we will certainly get back in touch with you and get those answers from you.
Do you see her?
Yeah, she waves.
Next, we've got Mr. Brian Rinko, the executive director of Allied Arts. So Brian, I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you, Hank. First off, I'd like to thank council and Mr. Griffith for your ongoing support of Allied Arts over the years. It's much appreciated. And I would like to say that for the fiscal year 2022, we are asking for $175,849.05. We are not asking for an increase for the next fiscal year. And I'd like to talk a little bit about what we've been able to do through the pandemic. We, first off, I'd like to talk about facilities and facilities repair, and what we've been able to do without our patrons in our facilities and our historic structures owned by you and maintained by us. We were able to upgrade the 100-year-old plumbing in the Marler House, which was undersized. And we also upgraded the bathrooms in the Marler House. We fixed the front steps and the handicap rail. We repaired the window sills and sashes manufactured and replaced the garden gate in the Marler House. And then with a grant from the Watson Brown Jr. Foundation and donations from the Friends of Allied Arts, we restored the exterior of the Griffin Cottage, which is on the corner of North Lane and Montgomery Street. And then we took down a large pecan tree that was in danger of falling on the Griffin Cottage. Felt like it was important to save the cottage that we just restored. And we also restored the coping, the brick coping that was in front of the Marler Cottage that's right next door to the Marler House. And then moving on to the market, Allen's Market across the street from the Marler House. We upgraded the lighting, the ceiling lighting that is in there on the first floor to LED, which is more efficient. We also added ceiling fans for cooling during the summer. We replaced an old, 20-year-old HVAC system, and were able to install a new floor over the top of a very dangerous original floor that was in the market. So with those upgrades and maintenance in our facilities, that was a big step for us. And we wouldn't have been able to do that without, with having patrons in there. It would have been a much slower process for us to have done those upgrades. So we were able to do that with some grant funding that we applied for. We were awarded, applied for, and were awarded over $33,000 this last fiscal year in both general operating support and for programming, and then for facilities repair as well. So that helped out a tremendous amount there. We used your city funding for matches to get that done. And then the Friends of Allied Arts also raised money for this year. They have raised already 60% of what they raised last year in memberships, with an increase in memberships and patrons donating so far this year. And we're only five months into the membership drive. So I think that's a pretty good, considering that we're still in the middle of a pandemic. So for our programming during the pandemic, even though most of our in-person programming was canceled or postponed during 2020, and some in 2021, Allied Arts was quick to transition into virtual programming, starting in late March of 2020. And as of today, we've had an increase of about four and a half times the participation in our virtual programming versus 2019 with our social media and our website visitation. We went from 14,500 visitors to over 63,000 visitors. And we had a 69% more visitors to our website than similar websites in our industry. So we're heavily visited. And since offering these videos online, which are our replacement programs for in-person, we're averaging over 120 views per video. And you take that into consideration, we don't get 120 visitors through the Marler House on a good week. So that kind of programming is significant, and we plan on continuing this type of programming even after things return to normal, because that obviously is something that's important to the citizens. And we found that our demographics are changing because of the online presence. We were having, most of our in-person programming, our demographics were aged 55 and older, the retired- retired group. And now we're finding the online demographics are every age group. And those online patrons, they're the working people, basically. And they come home and they can sit on their couch and dial into our Facebook page, or Instagram, or our website, and sit at their kitchen table, and they don't have to fight for parking to come to an event. They can also participate when we're normally closed, you know? And when they can't sleep at night, you know, 1:00 in the morning, or after work, when they're waiting for their pasta water to boil. So we intend to continue this online programming even when we, you know, have programming down at the Marler House or Allen's Market or at the Plaza. So I think it's a good thing. It's just another avenue to reach people and expose them to the benefits of arts programming. So we expanded our programs as well, gave us an opportunity to explore some different areas. And in May of 2020, we were approached by the Red Cross about partnering with them with their blood drives, and we accepted. And we couldn't think of a better partner. You know, they're obviously going to be as safe as possible with COVID and have the safest environment around them. And we've been averaging about two drives a month since May of 2020. And I actually got an email that I'd like to read for y'all. I shared it with my board not long ago. But this is from Brian Fern, the Senior Account Manager for the Red Cross. And he's my main contact who I scheduled the blood drives with. You all may have seen the Red Cross van parked outside of Allen's Market. But yeah, we had those blood drives in Allen's Market, and we offered, that was the partnership. We offered Allen's Market as their site, because they couldn't find any other site in downtown to offer or to get, to have their blood drives. And we partnered with them, and it's been a great success for us and for them. And I'd like to share this letter that he wrote to our board. Brian, I hope you are well. Wanted to send you an update regarding our blood drive partnership since late May of 2020. As so far, as of February 3, 2021, there have been 13 blood drives generating 267 units with an impact of over 800 lives saved. I can't say thank you enough. When we were faced with half our accounts canceling their blood drives, Allied Arts jumped in, opened their doors, and said, how can we help? When a blood drive ended, your response was always, when can we do it again? It was truly what we needed. Again, thank you, and I look forward to our continued partnership. So that was, that was one example. We introduced, another was we introduced three new literature programs, The Write Space. It's a community writing class program. And that was, that happened as a result of a Knight Foundation grant through an On the Table program, which was a partnership through the Twin Lakes Library System. And then we partnered with the Andalusia Institute and co-sponsored the Flannery O'Connor Short Story Discussions led by Dr. Bruce Gentry, who is the Director of O'Connor Studies at Georgia College, also an Allied Arts Board Member. That program regularly reaches over 50 participants. Mostly, they live in Millidgeville, but it does include some folks in surrounding counties and, believe it or not, around the world and other countries. So that's, that's a pretty successful program. And then we also partnered with Georgia College's Creative Writing Masters Program and offered a virtual community writing festival with, I think it was eight, eight different workshops for youth and adults. And all of these programs were free and open to the public. It was, so these, these new partnerships and these new literature workshops and classes have all been really, really successful. It's all part of our vision and our mission. And through y'all's help and funding, we've been able to expand what, what we're offering to the public. And even through the pandemic, it's been very successful. I'm encouraged by that. And then another partnership we had was with the Twin Lakes Library System and Millidgeville Main Street, and that was with the drive-in movie nights that we had, you know, during the pandemic. That, that was a breath of fresh air for our community. Everybody just loved it. We actually turned people away because it was so popular. We couldn't, we couldn't fit all the cars that wanted to come and watch the movies that we offered. We're hoping to start that back again as soon as things settle down with the restructuring of their system. And then, you know, in December, when the vaccines came out and the numbers started going down, we offered our first in-person program, which was Telebration. It's a storytelling event. We had that in the market, socially distanced masks. All the CDC guidelines were observed. We were only able to have 21 public in there. They were all socially distanced, like I said, and it was maxed out. It was a very popular event. Our storytelling events normally are, normally very well attended. And then we started exhibits back in February. We've had three so far in the Marler House. They're by appointment only, and we only allow 10, 10 folks in the Marler House at one time for social distancing reasons. And we had another storytelling in March in the market. And like I said before, we follow all the CDC recommendations for COVID, provide masks for folks who don't have masks, take temperatures. We open and close doors for people who enter and leave so that, you know, there's no contact there. Six-foot distancing for all, all seedings. That, that's why we can only have 21 people in the market. We sanitize all surfaces. And then we have a fogger as well. We fogged the whole first floor. And so we do all we can, you know, as practical, as the governor says. So as we move forward, we're currently offering the 38th Annual O'Connor Artist Exhibition. And it looks like we're going to have about 25 artists entering with a little over 50 pieces of work. And we had to cancel that last year, but it looks like folks are going to enter this year, and it'll be a nice jury to exhibit. Then we got a two-week residency at Oak Hill Middle School with Tim Olyphant, Mr. Oly. And he's going to reach a little over 400 students in the middle school. And then following that, on its heels, we got Zach Morgan in Baldwin County Schools, the Academy Schools, which is fourth and fifth grade. We've got a full slate of exhibits scheduled for the Marler House. We're keeping that flexible, depending on how the pandemic goes. So we're prepared to postpone if we have to. And then we're planning on resuming in-person performances late summer, fall as well. We do have in-person summer camps on a limited, limited schedule. It's much pared down. Those are socially distanced right now until CDC or the state opens things back up fully. But we also are partnering with Baldwin County Schools and offering a month-long Summer Dance Academy, actually, and that's for youth and adults. That's free of charge. And they're talking about even offering transportation and free lunches. So we're very excited about that. And so things are looking much better than they did last year. I think we've been able to transition pretty well through, through these difficult times. I'm, I'm trying to feel hopeful. So we're still being flexible in that we're paying attention to the numbers. We're listening to the guidance of the government and CDC. And we are going to, like I said before, we are going to continue our virtual programming. We're looking at different ways to offer different programming from what's in person, so people aren't seeing things twice and not repeating ourselves. So I hope y'all have had a chance to see our budget. Like I said before, we're not asking for an increase, but our budget for next year has increased. That's largely because I anticipate having opportunities for grants that we will be able to apply for. I've already applied for two new grants that weren't available to us in previous years. And that's a realistic goal. You'll see that it went up from 15,000 to 25. And if you look at year-to-date, already we've received 18. So I think, I think that's realistic. So if anyone has any questions, I would love to address those at this point.
Want to have any questions or comments from Brian?
I have, I have one question. You may have mentioned that your numbers have gone up from participation. Are you looking at more virtual things? And I think you answered this, in the near future? And the reason why I'm asking is because parents have been asking me, you know, believe it or not, a lot of people really don't know what L I R is all about, the Marla, Marlo House is about. What are the things they're doing? How can I get my children to participate because of the pandemic that is going on? And I think it's a great thing that you have done a lot of things virtually. I think that that has helped a lot with your participation. In many cases, I have shown some of the parents the different activities that you have going on down there that you send out to us. And I want to thank you for those bulletins that you do send out, because it gives me reasons to share to the community and let people know exactly what is going on. So are you going, do you plan on doing more virtually things?
We can, we plan on continuing what we're doing, yes. It's the, what I like to think of and call our enhanced programming, once we do continue doing our, or can, once we open back up fully, yes. So the virtual will be our enhanced programming. We've got it down to a science now. We've been doing it for over a year. We, we know how we can do it. And like I was saying before, I don't see it being a rerun of our in-person programming, but enhanced, which means different, but relating to our in-person program. And the reason why I want to do that is because I still want to encourage people to come to our in-person programming, a live performance or an exhibit. But then I want to offer them some behind-the-scenes programming that would give them some better understanding, maybe a private interview with an artist that, where the artist would talk about the creation of the work, or the writing of a song that they heard at a live, live performance, that type of program. And we could offer that even before the performance as an incentive for them to come to the performance. So yes, we're going to be offering the virtual programming, and we may even continue offering programming like being a rerun, but shorter clips of things that have happened. Like an exhibit, we could show one room of the exhibit as a teaser to come to the full exhibit. You see what I mean? So there are many, many different things that we could do virtually. It's limitless. So yes, we are going to continue doing those, those online programs, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from Brian? Well, Brian, thank you for your time tonight. If, as we go through the discussion, if you're, you're welcome to stay, but as we go through the discussion, if there are additional questions, I'll make sure we get in touch with you and get the answers from you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
That is all of our outside agency executive directors that, from the agencies, outside agencies that we fund. One of the things that I did with the executive staff at the meeting last Wednesday was shared with them, what was shared with you and the proposal the night before, and tell them my logic for that being what was shared over the course of the weekend. I thought about it, and I did tell them that I shared with you all the increases that they had asked for from personnel and salary standpoint, although I had not included them in my proposal. But over the weekend, I started thinking that if you have that information, you may have questions for them. So sent out an email and gave all the department heads that wished the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight. So with that, I will turn things over to Chief Swiker to share with you what he wishes to share.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith, and thank you, City Council, for allowing me to be a part of this tonight. Major Gray has stepped out to get some more numbers. Obviously, we were told by the city manager to get a budget up, and in our budget, obviously, we request stuff that sometimes we think is asking for the moon, but hopefully you can meet me in between. Before I get to the letter that I wrote to Mr. Griffith, you know, our budget request, I would like to show you some numbers to kind of make you understand, obviously, where the city of Millidgeville Police Department's at. But not only that, obviously knowing that not only the police department, but public safety as in general, has certainly took a hit this year, and not only with the pandemic, but other things outside, fortunately, not in our community, because I think our community has supported us. I can't ask for anything better. And obviously, my officers have stepped up to the plate, and I'm very proud of that. But let me, let me show you some numbers, just to get you in a mindset of the letter I wrote to Mr. Griffith during the budget proposal. So as of May 1, we've answered almost 27,000 calls for service. Obviously, we can maybe go back and say the pandemic, kids out of school, whatever. But we've worked two murders this year that, right now, we have unsolved. We certainly have suspects, but nobody's been charged. We've had We've had 51 shots called fired, almost weekly, we have that. Three armed robberies, we've had 18 aggravated assaults and over 100 entering all those. We've recovered over 33 handguns, either stolen or at different incidents, several rifles, several shotguns. So projected, I can tell you, we will break the barrier of everything in history of the police department, we'll go over 200,000 calls this year. And since I was employed in June of 1986, we have not had an increase in any staffing other than during the Clinton administration. I think Chief Waller was here then. Community policing was a big thing back then. We had a couple of officers that was introduced to the community policing and that was a match program, basically that they would pay for positions over a certain amount of time and you would replace those positions. Anyway, basically saying something fell through the cracks, those positions never was put back in place. But in the letter, and I'll get to the letter, I asked Mr. Hank, obviously, with certainly the, you know, trying to retain officers and trying to hire officers, it's been, I mean, an uphill climb. Nobody wants to be the police anymore. I certainly asked for four positions, extra positions, and a 7% across the board increase to sworn personnel. I certainly can tell you guys salaries in our general area from, of course, us, Georgia College, the Sheriff's Office, Central Georgia College, Technical College, the State Patrol, Navisont Health, and Georgia Military College. I can tell you my guys and our guys who work in this community are certainly underpaid and struggling. This is the reason I asked for this letter. I don't know if you guys have the letter that I wrote to Mr. Griffith and I'll read it to you. It says, "As you well know, 2020 was a trying time for law enforcement. We certainly have been through the pain of retaining, hiring personnel. We have seen an increase in businesses and with the redevelopment of Central State grounds has increased our call volume. I'm asking that you increase our sworn staff by four. This will be the first increase in 20 years. I'm also asking for a 7% increase across the board for all of us. And I'm asking for some big ticket items. We must have to continue to provide the quality of service to our community. Be attached. I've attached a copy of a five-year capital improvement plan I did in 2017. I provide a splash sheet and I work off when I start as chief in 2012." I'm just asking you guys to look at this and obviously, please ask me questions. I certainly can give you salaries of these entities I've talked to you about. Major Gray is here. Obviously, at one point, Central State Police Department actually had more people on the road than the city of Millersville did. Obviously, we took that, those grounds over. Obviously, there's not that many people there, but the increase of businesses, people buying up stuff over there, the Bostic Building, I don't know if you've got those calls.
33 calls just these first four months.
You know, we go out there at least twice a week. So 33 calls we've answered just at the Bostic Building alone in these last four months. So I'm open for questions if anybody wants to ask anything, please.
Mr. Chief Swiker, you said you had a five-year capital improvement plan on here. Is that attached, Mr. Griffith? Because I don't think I have that. I just have the letter.
I gave you everything that was in his book.
Okay. I don't have that. It's somewhere, Mayor. Let me see if I can find it. I've seen that. It's in one of my stuff as well. I took it a loose try to go back and piece it together.
And capital improvement, capital improvement expenditures, Mayor, would come out of splash. So I mean, we can, I'll make sure that you have that, but that would not be a part of the general fund.
Mayor, yes, that was certainly done before Mr. Griffith's time and I actually did that and come up with that, basically a capital outlay of projected funds, obviously depending on those splash indications. So that was done, basically provided by the numbers that were provided for me in 2012. And I think that 2012 splash, which I have and you can have certainly a copy of, that was given to the police department. And I only have public safety, so it was provided to the police department and the fire department for those funds. Obviously, you know, we went through some trying times with the splash stuff and, you know, that big ticket items, that is the only way we can survive, obviously with the cost of vehicles. And let me back and say this. Because of the pandemic, I was unable to order cars, the Dodge Charger, which we went to. Obviously, the Crown Vic is obsolete, but you still see them on the road. I think that's a, obviously, somebody was involved in the car manufacturing saying those cars last too long. So they did away the Crown Vic and started going to the Dodge Chargers. There were no, you couldn't order any Dodge Chargers, so I was pushed to the Durangos. So and let me go ahead and give you that. In February of 2020, Mr. Griffith gave me authority to order 10 Durangos. Bear in mind, 2020. We received the vehicles in basically the middle of October of 2020. And then we had the equipment put on there, which that was another backup because nobody was making the equipment. We received those 10 cars that I ordered in 2020 and got them on the road in February of this year. So those new cars is basically two years old. And, you know, and obviously, we did very well in 2012. Mr. Jarrett and you guys gave me an authority to order a new fleet. So you think about this, that the cars that, and time goes by fast, in 2013, we replaced the whole fleet. And now it's 2021 and, you know, if we don't keep up with the projected five-year plan, we're going to be back in the same boat with, with cars that we can't maintain, not only maintain, but, you know, the cost of parts and getting parts is crazy. I mean, I got two or three cars at five-star Dodge and they've been sitting there for two or three months because the parts are back ordered. Anything else, guys, please ask me.
So tell me again, Chief, how many cars you say you received in, that you ordered in 2020?
We, 10. We ordered 10 Durangos in February of 2020. We just got them on the road in February of this year.
Okay, so I'm just going to ask you to put it in plain English. So what, what else? I know you talked about your capital outlay, but what, how many more, I mean, how many more cars are we talking about? How many, when you say keeping up with things, what type of plan do we have?
In the projected five-year plan, you've got to at least provide at least seven vehicles every two years to keep the fleet at a certain level. I mean, our 2013 cars, you know, we're reaching around 80,000 to 100,000 miles. Me and Mr. Griffith had a conversation, obviously had the opportunity at one time to sell these cars to a close agency nearby and that certainly didn't work out. But what we do is our older cars, it's reaching around that 80, 90, 100,000 mile mark, we try to roll them out and replace them. Obviously, when I buy new cars, I start at the top and just roll out the older, I say older cars because we don't have any older cars. So our oldest car is 2013. The charges you see on the road are majority 2013s now. There is a couple 2017s that I was able to order back when Mr. Jarrett was here. And that was, that's basically about five cars that I tried to roll into Detective Bureau to start off with because it's, they don't put, they put low miles. And then I rolled them out to the fleet. And, you know, obviously, most of our 2013s, like I said, is 80,000 to 100,000 miles. Obviously, you look at different entities within the department as far as traffic, you're going to have more mileage on certain cars that ride more, not in zone areas, but ride the whole city. But your question being answered, I mean, you basically have to get at least seven cars every two years to keep the fleet sustainable as far as you're not actually riding around with cars with 100,000, 150,000 miles in the shop. And I'm sure Mr. Thomas can speak for that. It's just, I mean, all you're doing is Band-Aid and stuff and when those cars reach that mileage point, it's best to sell them either on gov.deal or there's certainly law enforcement agencies that has, has less funding than we have and want those cars. And that's what I try to do.
Chief Swiker, you're saying that every two years, we need to get seven cars?
On the cycle, Dr. Lee, that's how I anticipated it. Obviously, we're behind that cycle now. I've tried to catch up a little bit, but this proposal that I did, this five-year plan, was done back around 2012, 2013. I'm not sure. Obviously, Mr. Hank has that, that I gave to him. I don't know if that's actually in the budget, but he has that. And if he doesn't, I certainly can't provide that with you that I provided Mr. Jarrett back in that timeframe. You know, that's where I'm at. I certainly can redo that, but I'm, you know, basically starting at scratch from what I have now.
So how many cars have we been getting?
So, so in 2012, when you guys made me the chief, you guys gave me authority, replaced a fleet that was, I mean, we were riding around in, you know, 1999 Crown Vics with over 200, some 300,000 miles and we were able to replace, and I think, and off the cuff, I think it was around 40 cars we purchased through splash with an incentive of payback programs as far as making monthly payments was around $1,300,000 that we replaced the fleet with. So in 2013, we replaced basically every single car we've had. That being said, when I, when I did that, I looked at, obviously, some people were, Dodge was offering incentive of, you know, three-year, 100,000 mile, no warranty. So there was no actual maintenance that was required to probably 2016, 2017, and when we started having to pay. Obviously, there was a little hiccup with Dodge because it was the first new patrol vehicle they come out with. We replaced a couple of engines, we're here replacing a couple of engines. So we haven't replaced any cars. I replaced, I think, seven in 2017. And obviously, this past 2020, I replaced 10. So basically, 17 cars we have replaced since 2013.
And that's out of your 40 that you have?
That's correct. We basically have around 40, 42 cars that is admin, detective, and obviously patrol. But I think in the area, obviously, these big-ticket items, and I'll go ahead and tell you guys, I talked to Sheriff Massey today. We are going in front of the Ballin Commissioners, May 18th, to discuss our radio situation. Obviously, we are at the mercy of the Sheriff's Office as far as our radio system being 911. Our radios is now obsolete. Just replace my portable radios, it's going to cost around $200,000. Obviously, the sheriff and I is hoping to convince the county commissioners, probably along with partnership with the city, on this COVID relief money that's offered and possibly getting some relief from trying to replace our radio system. And then me and Chief Call, you talked about that. Our radios are, they don't even make parts for them anymore. And when a radio goes down, we're basically paying about $600 for it to get repaired. It's not even compatible with the new system they're offering. That also being said, with tasers is now running out. I just got a quote today to replace tasers. I mean, unfortunately, computers and technology changes every day and they basically have you handcuffed as far as technology because certain things you can, like tasers, there's only one person who makes those and they basically have the, the whole field and nobody can bid against them. And my taser cost is around $150,000 to replace those and obviously, we need those. So there's big-ticket items that's out there. Obviously, we have tried to with, with our court system, putting on adding fees, we've tried to maintain something that doesn't cost taxpayers. We certainly put in these speed cameras to hopefully generate a little bit of funds by offenders to help pay for some stuff. But I think our main topic, if I could say this, would be the salaries and incentive programs that other law enforcement agencies are offering and we just can't keep the hell here.
I'm going to make a comment. Somehow, no matter what we, no matter across the board, we go through our up and down cycles and, and I don't know how, but I hope we can start from day one today to start to try to plan better. It seems like we get into a, too quicksand and, and we're starting to go down. And then we have to try to play catch-up. And by the time we play catch-up, we're behind again. And I don't know what, Hank, you may envision any different than what we've done in the past. I know there are a lot of times that we never know what kind of conversations go on. That's strictly between the manager position and department heads. But I think, you know, I know we have sloshed funds. I know we need to use some sloshed funds and that, that's just not for the police departments, for the fire department, for public works, it's across the board, water and sewer. We've got so much that, that we need to spend on, we probably need a splash for just us. But somewhere along the line, we've got to have some type of comprehensive plan that will not only get us to where we need to be, but keep us to where we need to be. And that's beyond. And that's beyond probably who all is serving now. Something that we can pass on that, um, that, that will make it a little bit easier to try to keep up. Because I, I know we're probably behind. I, I just heard through the grapevine at the county, uh, sheriff's department that they got a big boost and, and, uh, I'm assuming by seeing some heads shaking up and down, that's the truth. And, and, uh, you know, you're, you're not only talking about equipment and everything, but you're also talking about positions and, and, uh, you know, you've, you've probably got people that are, are, um, tired. Uh, you got people that are, you know, working a good bit. Uh, in the past, we've gotten into positions of, of extreme overtime. And, uh, with all the overtime, you certainly can hire extra people, but you gotta have enough incentive there for somebody to come and, uh, and to be a part.
I certainly agree with that. Mr. Steve, I was just actually talking to someone in reference to this today, how we're behind the curve ball all the time and not having that comprehensive plan to keep us going. With all that's going on in the nation today, uh, we certainly need for our police department, our fire department to be up to par. Uh, that's no question, Ed.
Oh, yeah. Across the board, there's no doubt about it. And, and, uh, we've got to start somewhere. We can't start it all at one time. I, I think everybody in here knows that. Uh, like you said, Dre, it's a, it's a high in the sky wishlist and, and, uh, you know, I, I wish that we could do all that. And, and, uh, but we know we can't, not all at once. But we got to start somewhere, and we got to start building up.
You're correct.
Well, you know, um,
Competitive, we've got, uh, uh, and that's, that's what you do in business. Uh, if you're not competitive, you're gonna be out of business.
You're right.
And that's what concerns me about this city. Uh, I see this city as no different than being a huge industry. And, uh, we've, we've got all the components, and they're all sitting right here in front of us. And, uh, we, we just, we got to do something, guys.
Well, you know, Mr. Chambers, when we had our work session.
Mindset, Mr. Steve. Uh, right now, and, and it's, it's certainly, our brochures indicate this, I start and sell it for a certified police officer, it's thirty-six thousand, seven oh six seventy-seven.
Say, Hank, you know those?
With that seven percent increase.
With the raise.
That's with the raise.
You would go to thirty-nine thousand, two seven six twenty-four.
What big of counties is?
As of today.
It's about where we're coming from.
Just gonna tell you, Georgia College and State University.
Just went to.
Their starting salary is thirty-five thousand, four forty-one, free college tuition, and forty hours of overtime a week. The Baldwin County Sheriff's Department just got a thirty-two hundred dollar bonus that's averaged out this fiscal year. In January the first of twenty twenty-two, they will go to forty thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and forty cents. Central Georgia Technical College, their starting salary is thirty-six thousand, five hundred, a couple hundred dollars less than us. They offer free tuition and any incentive, incentive pay with any increases with other schooling or anything, that is five percent above that. The Georgia State Patrol, they start at forty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty. Naviston Health, who is, who is, uh, Chief Judy is a great friend of mine, uh, has taken, uh, at least three officers of mine. Hey, like, I, I can't say anything. They start out around forty thousand with differential pay, with nighttime work, and offer eighty hours of overtime a week if they want it. Georgia Military College, right, right across the street, they start out with thirty-two thousand, well, they're two, I think they have two now, three sworn personnel, with free college tuition. With the seven percent increase that I'm asking, we're still behind the eight ball. Great PD, less than thirty miles away, starts our office off at forty thousand dollars a
They're writing those tickets in great coverage. Cover everything.
Hank, you got an extra twenty million?
Uh, no, I'm about ten million short.
That's all. And put in all jokes aside, we, you know, decision makers, we're here at the table tonight, we just gotta find some, some creative ways, look at it as, as everything he's just rattled off and see, just look at it, Chief, that's what, you know, as you said, that pie in the sky, well, you know, we, we can't pull down it, but we can sit at the table and discuss how we can come around it, some kind of house.
Absolutely. And then I, as I said, you know, we, we've been really fortunate. We've been able to, certainly with Major Gray's help and some changes in personnel, been able to recruit people. But guys, I'm telling you, uh, the services, and I'm sure Chief Colly is gonna say this, the services that we require, we anticipate, we expect, we got to pay these guys or we're not gonna have, we're gonna be l- less than what we expect.
And Chief Swickert, let me say this to you and, and Major Gray, we, we greatly appreciate the policing service that you all have provided, not just throughout COVID, but even before now. And I can truly say I will put up the military PD against anybody at any given time. You all have done a tremendous job. And I see the calls that you all have to go to, some of them, sometimes me and Mr. Griffith shaking our head that, you know, we wish we could stop some of those unnecessary calls for you guys. But, you know, I, I want to express that on my behalf, and I'm sure with counsel, you did a wonderful job, and you know, you continue to do a great job. Now, it's just all of us sitting down and being able to figure out how to get some funding to help you all even more.
Thank you very much, and thank, and thank y'all for your support. Thank you very much.
Don't give up on us. We gonna do what we can to help.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, one of the things I shared with all of the department heads at the executive staff meeting last Wednesday was just because these, these requests did not make it into the budget proposal, did not mean that I didn't think they were important. I do think they import, they're important. Um, and, uh, and, uh, I, I hope all the department heads believe me when I say that because they are. Mr. Chambers made a very good point, and that is that, uh, we're playing catch-up, and we are not playing catch-up just from the last couple of years, we're playing catch-up from a long time, both in people and in stuff. And, um, it's gonna take us a little while to be able to catch up. One of the things we were looking at before the pandemic, talking about planning would, would help tremendously, and we'll, we will continue to look at this, uh, down the road, but we were looking at an asset management system that would work across all departments to manage the, uh, the non-human resource assets that we have, that would do everything from generate work orders for Mr. Thomas and, and Mr. Haddon to, um, to manage the maintenance on the vehicles and, um, any other rolling stock that we have. But that software is extremely important, too. But I think we may be able to be in a position where, as we look at being able to automate things, um, as a part of being able to do business better if we find ourselves in another pandemic, that the American Rescue, um, Plan Act funds may give us the opportunity to be able to, to get some of those things in place that we have wanted, we just really haven't been able to find the money for. Of course, for the first time, uh, in a long time, we're also getting splotch money again, uh, so we can start looking at capital improvements that those will be able to fund. Um, uh, obviously, that's not coming in all at one time, but we can, we know what, we anticipate what the minimum on that will be, uh, and we'll start working through the budget, uh, on that. Um, I will, I will say on the radio piece, and Chief Swickert knows this, because he and I have had conversations about this, it, I hate being under the thumb of the county on that. Um, but we, we don't have any choice at this point in time. It's the system that was gone with, when the county made that change, and unfortunately, we just got to ride that piece out. Um, so there's some things that we can control, there's some things that we can't, and, uh, I certainly hope to do everything I can to, uh, to get us through these situations that we're in, but we are, we're playing a lot of catch-up. You're exactly, you're exactly right. Any other questions or comments for Chief Swickert?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
I think we're good.
Somebody said yes, sir.
He was, he was responding to Mr. Griffith.
Okay, okay.
I think he thought you had some more questions for him.
Well, I, I was just gonna say, uh, you know, Chief, we, we talked about, and Mr. Griffith just mentioned it, because when we had our retreat before the pandemic, I mentioned to them then that we needed to get together a capital improvements plan so that we could look for, look towards the future for, for the things that we needed to replace so we could have a schedule and, and, um, ha- have those things outlined as to what year we need to be prepared to budget those things that needed replacing for that particular year. I said that then, and I still agree now that that's something that we need, we counsel. And, uh, along with the department heads and the city manager need to sit down and start planning for, because it, it, it is hard to catch up. I mean, we know that in our own personal lives, where we neglect things at home, that everything has a way of tearing up at the same time, from cars to washing machines, everything in your household, if you have a plan to replace those in a timely manner, um, so that, uh, and did the, you know, prepare for the maintenance and, and budget it for all of those things. So this is just something that we have got to start doing. So, uh, I would say to the department heads, if I'm not overstepping my boundaries, Mr. Griffith, that you start looking at that and within your department, with your vehicles, come up with a plan and then provide it to the city manager so that he can provide it to us, and then we can all sit down and take a look at these things that, that need to be replaced, when they need to replace it. I mean, I, everything has a lifespan, so we need to look at, look at lifespan, look at, look at use and, and, and how long it took you to get from point A to point B, like, you know, twenty thirteen, so you're saying that it took, um, seven, almost eight years to get to eighty thousand miles? So then we can have a plan for how we need to replace those things, fire trucks and, and everything else, Mr. Thomas, your equipment as well. We just need to start planning, and that planning has to start with you because you all are aware of more things than we are. We could sit down all day long and say we need to replace, we don't need to replace police cars until ten years from now, but you know better than we do.
But, uh, Ms. Nees, you're certainly correct, and obviously, I have that, uh, that five-year plan I did back then. Obviously, that money was generated on SLOSH that was collected, obviously, uh, generating more families, more, you know, I, I don't think anybody can understand unless you drive up four forty-one on Friday evening, this now is turning into Thursday, right?
No, shoot, it's turning every day now.
You know, you're backed up from Garrett Way Mall, and it takes you twenty minutes to get to a red light.
That's every day.
Uh, that, that was proposed out, and I, and I did the proposal based off SLOSH. Unfortunately, the hiccups has come before the city and the county, you know, I, I did that projected off SLOSH coming in, you know, i- if SLOSH is not there, I, I don't think any taxpayer would never refuse to play SLOSH anymore. I certainly don't wanna say that, but they, they have to understand the cost of doing business, either your taxes go up or it generates somewhere else. But I, I did do that, and I certainly will provide that to you, and it, it did break down not only vehicles, it, it broke down maintenance, computers, uh, yard work.
Right, right.
Building repair. So it was all broke down, if you would like to see that.
Okay, yeah, we, we need, that's something that we need to, um, you, you probably need to get it to the city manager and let him provide it with us, but that will be something that.
He actually has it in his budget book.
Okay.
Uh, you said you did it on, on two thousand twelve, Chief, but the one that I have actually starts on FY eighteen. That's the one you're speaking of, correct?
Uh, 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 what, what page is that, Mr. Griffith?
Uh, it's gonna be about page four or five in your, in your, uh, it's right before tab You got City of Milford.
You're correct. So, so when I, when I did that five-year project, uh, during the twenty thirteen, I was provided with, and helped me out, uh, I think the new SLOSH started in twenty eighteen, if I'm not correct.
That is correct.
Mm-hmm.
We did not start receiving it then, but it started then.
I know, I, I, I understand, I understand that, but I'm talking, as far, so, uh, in the previous administration, I, I, obviously, uh, all funds were collected prior to spending money, which is not a bad business proposal, but, uh, I, I was, I was issued, I, I think the two thousand and twelve SLOSH, and then I gave a five-year proposed budget on the next SLOSH, which actually ran out a projected year of twenty twenty-two. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. And, and I have that in your book, and I'll make sure counsel gets that.
So based off that projection of the twenty twelve budget that, that you'll see prior to that, uh, it may, may not be in that one, but it's shown maybe in my, uh, other briefing, Hank, what you saw where it broke down with public safety, the police department received, uh, in, in the twenty, and I'm not sure about the years, uh, and I, I'm assuming it's the twenty twelve SLOSH.
The two million, four thousand.
Police department received two million, four thousand, four hundred dollars.
Right.
The fire department received one million, eighty-six thousand dollars. In, in, in that proposal, projects were identified, and in, uh, twenty thirteen, I can show you what I spent out of that two thousand and twelve SLOSH. So I basically spent in twenty thirteen, one million, around, one million, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, which left me over like seven hundred thousand dollars left in the two thousand and twelve SLOSH. So the projection of the plan I showed you was the next SLOSH tenure.
And then the remaining money from the two thousand and twelve SLOSH is actually what went toward your most current vehicles and, and your building maintenance and those kinds of things, so that's right.
So pulling, pulling out of those seven cars and, and maybe a couple of other items, and I'm not really off the top of my head, but Shay could tell me, that, that seven hundred thousand plus money was, it was spent on, in seventeen, and obviously, twenty twenty with the tender angle, so currently, not that I'm aware of, any money has been spent, obviously not collected, but, uh, you know, toward this new six-year SLOSH.
No, no funds have been expended against the FY eighteen, uh, SLOSH because we just started getting those funds about a month ago, so they have not even been doled out to the department.
Yeah. That's been a challenge.
Let me ask a question, so maybe this is something, uh, it goes all the way back, Ms. Walden, Ms. Nees, whoever. So, and, and hearing you all talk about what was budgeted for the police department, the cars, did you not operate this pretty much like a state, state facilities did, where they just automatically had that money put out there for the, uh, replacement of these vehicles or equipment as such on a basis? Or where did we get off track? Did we get off track because money was redirected somewhere else, or that SLOSH funds didn't just, they did not come in, or reason why we saw off track? Just a question, curiosity for me.
I, 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 Mayor, I, I can tell you, uh, when these vehicles were purchased, now, I, I can't say if, uh, you know, what percentage was, was SLOSH that's coming in each year. Uh, Ms. Brenda Josie was certainly the finance director back then. She went through GMA, who offered, uh, a, a, a low interest rate to pay, to, to get these improvements, and the monies were, the payments would come out of each SLOSH, and that's how we paid for that. It wa- it wasn't a lump, one lump sum to pull it out, that's, that's how I know we paid for the vehicles, and I'm not sure about. In, in the projects of what's provided in the two thousand and twelve public safety, uh, you had several projects, obviously, vehi- the 2012 public safety, uh, you had several projects, obviously vehicles, computers, building improvements, radio upgrades, firing range upgrades, camera systems, communication equivalent, and our LPR system that we put on cars to recognize tags. So those were projects that were indicated during that, uh, during that amount that was allocated for the police department.
And I suspect those were projects that were actually in the splash agreement if I had to guess that, that the referendum was built on.
Right, right. But, but kind of to answer your question, Mayor, when you're saying those monies weren't put out there to automatically replace those cars, that, no, no, that's not how, that's not even how the state do it. They put in money for vehicles, um, every year, but it's not just to automatically replace something because they, they, um, they do a capital, capital improve, uh, improvements program too, and they have these things set aside, you know, money set aside, uh, every year to, um, to replace certain things. But no, it's not automatically put out there to replace certain vehicles and, and anybody, I don't know anybody that budget like that to just automatically replace them.
I, I, I think, uh, I think you have to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hank, you have to identify projects that you want to spend your, uh, your money on.
That's correct.
Right.
Obviously, uh, some projects may outweigh the other and you may can pull from one project to the other.
Right.
But you have to identify certain projects to spend splash on. Is that correct in saying?
That is correct. Now, they can be very general in nature.
Right, right.
But you do have to identify them. And I, I think Ms. Shinholster's point was well made in terms of, of, you know, having, having a, a maintenance plan that comes from the department heads. And I probably really shouldn't say it this way, but I would like to see that information without the thought of money even involved. Just, just give me the maintenance, give me the maintenance plan and then we'll try to back into a budget to be able to, uh, to be able to fund it.
Right.
Uh, don't let the budget drive what you, what you maintain, maintain what you've got to maintain and then hopefully the budget can help, can, can back into that piece. So as you're, as you're, as a department head, as you're thinking about maintenance plans on, on your non-person, non-human resource assets as well as your human resource assets for that matter, that, that, don't worry about the budgeting piece. Give us, give us the, give us the plan and then we can, we can work the budget towards that plan.
See, that's what you all are supposed to provide a plan and, and then let us worry about how to fund it each year, um, where the money's going to come from.
I mean, you obviously, just like gas prices and, uh, we certainly can talk about that. You, you budgeted something last year when gas prices were certainly, uh, down and that, now before July, you're talking about doubling your fuel costs. You, you can't necessarily say what, you got to have some kind of figure to play with because you never know. Just like computers, last year I was buying computers for a laptop, $1,100 a piece, and now that next quote, I'm going up to $2,200 a piece. So, so you, you can't, uh, like, like a radio, our, our current radios that we currently have, we bought for $600 a piece and our new quote is running about $4,500 a piece.
Maybe I'll share.
What's that?
I just said maybe I'll share.
Share from different cars, okay, Mrs. Nees?
I got a little bit.
Not, not saying that's a bad comment, Mrs. Nees, because we've actually looked at, and, and obviously departments, uh, and some of my chief's friends are hot spotting , uh, computers, tasers, you know, there's, there's just not enough revenue to, to buy, just say our department, you know, 42-man department, everything that's personally there. So they're hot spotting, you know, they're putting computers in the squad room, come in, you check it in, check it out.
Right, I was going to say, if it's a sole source and it's only one vendor that can provide.
Then you come to an issue where, well, okay, if I'm checking out a taser or I'm checking out a body cam or computer and, and, and the city gives me the ability to take my vehicle home on the way to or the way home, I get in a situation and we don't have those resources anymore. Obviously, we, we've looked at that and, and that's certainly a cost benefit issue that, that, that a lot of departments, and I say, most of my guys, my friends, you know, Peachtree City, Dunwoody, all these guys, they, they, they're doing the same thing, but there, there, there's pluses and there's minuses to that. But we've, we've actually looked at hot spotting equipment.
Yeah. Mr. Mullins, is Mr. Mullins trying to jump in and say something? I keep getting away down here.
No, I'm not, no, I'm, I'm good.
Oh, okay. I'm sure we could go on and on about this area tonight, Mr. Griffin, so, um, I'm not gonna take your show. Chief, you're pretty confident.
Not my show, Mayor.
Yeah, very much. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you both.
Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Major. Now I'm gonna turn things over to Chief Collier. I think he's probably gonna share a lot of the same kind of information with us that Chief Swiker did, uh, but we certainly want to give him the opportunity to, um, to do that. You all received an email from him yesterday, uh, that had just had a general, and it is not in your packet because it came to you via email yesterday, but, uh, in the letter, and he can expound on this, but in the letter, it basically was asking just for a, a general increase. He did not give a dollar amount that he was looking for, but he just asked for a general increase in terms of, of firefighter pay. So with that, Chief Collier, uh, take it from there.
Um, thank you very much, um, Mayor, Council and, uh, City Manager. Certainly want to thank you for this opportunity to share, um, where we are with the fire department. Uh, I will certainly echo some of the same sentiments that, uh, Chief Swiker did. First of all, I'd like to say that since I've arrived in 2018, uh, the fire department has been progressively moving forward. If you were to come to Station One, you actually can't come to Station Two at the moment because it is, um, the roof is being replaced, uh, the plumbing is being worked on, there's a whole new bathroom that will be there, and , uh, they are started today to clean the engine room and it's going to be painted. So I also like to, before I move beyond that, I, I cannot overlook the fact that many of the men and women that make up this organization are the personnel that do a tremendous amount of this work. Uh, they put their skills that they've acquired, uh, in other venues to use in our organization as well as risking their lives to be professional firefighters, something that I have done for 34 years. Uh, if you come to Station One, you'll start to see how just the motif of that building has been, uh, reconfigured and it has been updated and it looks real, real good. I have to point out again and reiterate that that labor is the labor of the men and women that make up, make up the organization. Baldwin County has been gracious enough to allow us to be housed and run and respond out of Station Seven while the plumbing and those issues associated with Station Two are being addressed. I am literally surprised that, uh, the city has not been faced with all kind of, uh, lawsuits from employees relevant to, uh, the conditions of that particular, um, building. We want to continue to, uh, find out is there going to be any ongoing issues relative to air quality for that particular fire station. Now let me get to, uh, I guess you might say the meat and the potatoes. Um, currently, Millersville Fire starting pay for a firefighter is about $31,600. And when you look at the area, as I said in the letter, just the middle Georgia area alone, uh, you'll see a stark contrast. Uh, Green County's appeal is you will make $41,000 if you come and arrive and you have an emergency EMR status. That's a, um, first responder certification. You have an EMT certification that they are offering higher pay. Uh, Macon, Bev County similarly are offering the same amount of money. Now bear in mind, our fire lieutenant is making $40,500. So you go a few counties over and you are a firefighter making the same money that you're making as a fire lieutenant. Uh, so that's a tremendous appeal for someone to say, listen, if I don't have to bear the responsibility or build a fire station, why don't I go somewhere else and make more money? Um, we have to do something. We need to do something. I was in McDonald's and ironically, I looked around and there was an advertisement that said you can join McDonald's and McDonald's would pay you incentive pay for college. In fact, they will send you to college and then pay for you to go there and provide incentive pay. But we have members, uh, again, that we must be proud of, the members of Military Fire Rescue who are battalion chiefs are required to have 64 hours of training specific to that position. In other words, you are functioning in a senior and executive position. You need to know what that's all about. You need to be educated. You need to be trained. You need to be around other people that can help give you insight and buttress, uh, your experience relative to that position. That's 64 hours that they are required to get and we're not giving them incentive pay for doing it. You can't continue to keep people motivated to do things like this because those requirements are at every level. If you are sergeant, you have to be trained. You have to know specifically about what you're doing, what we're asking you to do. It reduces the liability that the city would incur and we're not paying them any incentive pay to do it. We're not providing enough motivation for them to be engaged in a professional way. And sometimes it may appear, particularly in the profession that I am in, that, uh, the old mantra used to be that all you guys are doing is playing checkers and cards. That's just not the case anymore. I don't, uh, maybe 40, 50 years ago, that was the case, but the fire service is a very dynamic service. It is deeply engaged in the life of the community regardless of where you are in the fire service. Here alone in Millersville, we've had two community events. Uh, the last big community event we had, it was specifically designed for youth to be engaged in the fire service. And when they transition over the summer and go back to school, we want to celebrate that. Not only do we want to celebrate that, but we want to impact people that might be struggling and grappling with funding to send their child back to school. So we had a community basketball game. At the, at halftime in the game, we give the child that participated over the summer and his family a check for $300 to help that family as they're going back to school, uh, with whatever costs is associated with that. That's a big thing for a community regardless if you're in a big world that I came from or a small world, uh, in comparisons to Atlanta, Georgia. And so when you look at people, men, women, and you ask them to do things, and some of my staff, uh, may think I'm a tad bit demanding because I always am pushing them to do better, you gotta be fair to those people. And by being fair, you gotta compensate them because our world is a much different world from when I started 34 years ago. Uh, you can be assured that you're gonna get a certain amount of money, a certain amount of time, a certain amount of incentive, and the organization was always gonna be committed to you if you were committed to the organization. I would suggest and appeal to you that at minimum, our firefighter pay should be $36,500. And I would also say that as we have done already within our department, that there needs to be a separation of no less than $3,000 between these ranks. If you go over to Baldwin County now, they're paying relief drivers $33,000. Millersville pays their sergeant $35,500. So if you start them with $36,500 and a half and there's a minimum of $3,000 that separates each rank, you got motivation to continue to learn, to continue to grow, to continue to be committed to the organization, and you reduce the amount of pay compression that you would have if you didn't separate, uh, rank for rank, position for position, that people are working at a higher level of capacity. We now require people to, who join Military Fire Rescue to sign a two-year commitment agreement with us or pay us some money back for the things that we provided for you. If you're gonna attract them, if you're gonna retain them, if they're gonna make us all better, we have to, um, provide and respond to them appropriately. I can entertain any questions if anyone may have.
I'm gonna make a comment and that is, um, Chief, thank you for your professionalism that you're injecting into, uh, into the department. Um, I think that is, um, is something that was certainly needed, but I think this goes right back to, uh, where we were and that is that we, we have fallen behind. We got to catch back up. Um, one of the hard parts of getting starting salaries up is that you've got to do it across the board. You can't, you can't get that starting salary up and then they're making the same thing that your sergeants are making.
Absolutely.
You know, it, it, and I know you understand that, but, uh, that just, um, it's like a ripple effect. Um, when we think about, well, we've got 10 guys that we've got to pay, you know, 5,000 extra a year, that's 50 grand. That's not too bad, but then when the ripple effect hits and it becomes quarter of a million, then, and then it's something that you have to sustain. Um, that's why I'm, you know, I, I echo what Ms. Shinholster said about that capital improvement, but our, our biggest capital is our work employees. And, uh, until we learn to start taking care of them on a, on a yearly basis and not just with raises, but making sure that we're competitive and that we give incentive to people to stay there for 30 years or 35 years and, and, uh, and retire there. Um, we're just gonna keep batting this around year in and year out. I, Chief Swiker, you said something about 441, about it backing up and all that, and I was sitting there thinking about 441 is kind of a micro, uh, ism of the whole department, the whole city of Millersville. Every department in this city can be affected by 441. By backing up on a Friday afternoon, we can have a wreck, we can get the fire department, police department called out, we can have a water sewer line go out, we'll end up making the police department have to come out. We can end up with water backup with the storm that we had that'll make Ken Thomas's head spin because we've got water backed up and, and cars are spraying water everywhere and people sliding and everything can go on within that two-mile stretch that can just make this whole city turning on its head. And, uh, you know, how, how, um, how much our departments are interactive with each other. And, uh, so we, we gotta get going. Let's get at it, Hank.
Mr. Rizzo, I wanna, uh, Mr. Rizzo, I want to say that you're absolutely right. Uh, uh, I do understand that you can't necessarily do everything at one time. Uh, I like, uh, Chief Swiker, I've provided a projection of five-year projection for, uh, more weighty a cost in terms of capital improvement. Uh, but I do think that there are little things that we can do on a consistent basis, uh, that say to the people that work with us and for us that we're committed to them. For example, this incentive, this matter, whole matter of incentive pay. If we, as a If we, as a, as a city, decide that we are going to pay people for what they do that we can use and benefit as a city. And we take that number, whether that's five, seven, eight, or ten percent, factor that into their overall cost, then when an employee requests that incentive pay, we already got it in there. We already factored it in almost like insurance, pension, workers' comp, et cetera. And we can give it to them. It, it's highly unlikely that everybody would hit that point at the same time. Probably be staggered. So if we planned it and, and put it in there, in that overall number, for example, the overall number for a certified firefighter is sixty-one thousand dollars. That includes uh, insurance, et cetera. So if we did things like that, people at least can know that this is what they can anticipate, what they can uh, project and which gives them a reason to now want to do better and want to uh, enhance skills and not necessarily take those skills and take them somewhere else because I'm in my early or mid twenties.
I totally agree with that, Chief. Uh, we're in the midst of time. And now we're, uh, you know, a lot of people say everybody's looking for a job. But then we, we're dealing with our millennials who, they don't have to stay on a job a year or two and they're gone uh, because it's not about that little starting pay. You know, I can always go make it somewhere else. So um, whatever we do to help garner, to keep the people here, I think is a plus. There again, Chief, we, we appreciate you and what your fire department do and the visibility that you have now added as well to our community uh, as a firefighting team. We do appreciate that as a whole. Uh, I, I think our police department and our fire department is leading the way and starting to be very active in our community. And people, police department always have, what we feel, the thing that they do with the kids or whatever the case might be. Presence is a good show of force because by show of hands, any day, I think if we had to talk to our constituents, uh, they're, they'll want, they wanna see better police, they wanna see that our firefighters are able to respond. Uh, our public works can perform as they need to perform. And you know, it sits on your hands right now as to how we uh, try to get through this budget process. And I say you are a streetman, council, giving it back to the city manager who, who gives us his thoughts on it and then bring it to mayor and council. Because I even play a small part where I have to sit in and listen to, to the point, we never know what the mayor might have to, to chime in on. So, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Chief Collier? Maybe Mr. Griffin, we probably should have scheduled somebody else on another night.
All right. Thank you, Chief Collier.
Thank you.
Now, Public Works Director, Mr. Tim Thomas. Tim, the floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Where do I begin? Um, I'll echo what uh, Chief, both Chiefs have said. One, two, a couple of things I would like to see uh, to begin that one would be an annual cost of living uh, increase along with across-the-board uh, adjustment, salary adjustment uh, with public work. We on average per hour about two fifty to three dollars below average. And uh, that's, it makes it difficult to, to retain employees, especially the younger guys that elect the labor positions. Third, we have uh, issues with inventory, equipment, uh, upkeep. Uh, I think that access management system would solve issues especially with uh, the turnover for the equipment. It, you know, it, it allows you to, to uh, know when they rotate your, your vehicles. So that would most definitely simplify um, manual labor for them, it'll reduce it. So I go and talk about public work. Public work, we have uh, thirty authorized positions. And these guys have to maintain over a hundred miles of uh, satellite. To kind of break that down, we have right, the right of ways, they have to be more than cut. You only have ten guys available to do that and, and those are authorized positions. And uh, we try to do it on a thirty-day cycle, but we're not, we're on demand. We, we can't make it. Uh, the street department, uh, we had ten authorized position there. We only operate with about six guys. Stormwater, uh, we have uh, I think six authorized position there. And uh, they are not full. We only have three guys. Bottom line, we're working with the thirty authorized position, trying to maintain a hundred miles of, of right of ways when we really need forty-three position. I made a request for seven positions. Uh, you take stormwater, we need a supervisor in the stormwater department. We need two labors uh, also in the stormwater. Uh, street department, we need two uh, labor, street workers, maintenance workers. Uh, we need a facility maintenance worker as well, which is a position that we, that doesn't even exist with public work. The next position would be receptionist that we need to handle, to, you know, greet and meet and, and receive calls. Is with uh, free up the admin, uh, administrative system where she can be effective with assisting me and, and the duties we need to do. Uh, going back to stormwater, that's the big. When I came, stormwater didn't exist. The department didn't exist. Now we have a stormwater. And what, what happened? The guys that we had in the street department, we don't, we took them and we split those guys up and put five in the street and six over in storm. Well, we created a new, new department, which now we, our infrastructure, stormwater has began to fail. When I came, they, we had several areas, major areas that was deteriorating and needed replaced. So now we having to address the, these larger uh, should I say, uh, projects uh, where public work normally haven't been having to do that before I came. So what had happened, we've taken away from other areas such as downtown. And keep in mind, we have the uh, city uh, facilities such as city hall, the other building, police department, the farmer's market. And our gas is, is stressed. And there's no way we can continue to maintain these uh, this, this hundred mile right of way with the existing thirty authorized positions. So I came here tonight to ask that you all uh, approve these seven positions. Um, when we actually need uh, we actually need thirteen to be really effective and to maintain our daily operations along with the complaints and the emergency calls. And, and it's, it's very difficult to do it. And that's basically all I have for tonight. Any questions? I, I made an answer.
I did want to make one comment and that is uh, very proud of what you're doing already with stormwater. The projects that you've already completed. Uh, me and my twenty-year-old John Deere, we're keeping about a eighth of a mile of North Jefferson cut for you. And uh, just wanted to let you know that, that uh, trying to keep it clean.
Straighten it on to a quarter mile.
A councilman doing his job.
Trying to cut all the way down to, well, I'd be waiting for him.
Thanks, Steve.
Mr. Thomas, and I heard you say, out of those positions, what did you say about those positions? I'm sorry, I, I missed that part of it.
Uh, actually, uh, stormwater, if you look at the organization chart for stormwater, uh, we don't have a supervisor. And that's uh, that's a position that's, that's needed for that department. And under the labor, which is, anytime you have, you make up a construction, a crew, you need more labor than anything else, than skill. So if you look at my chart for, for the uh, stormwater, we have only one labor authorized position. And the rest are single as well. In fact, is right here, we have one crew leader, uh, one heavy equipment operator. And that heavy equipment operator is my yard man and equipment tool. Uh, we have one equipment operator and one labor. That's the stormwater. Now, keep in mind, the street department and stormwater crew have to come together to, when you all see them paving roads, you're looking at the stormwater and the street department crew together. So if, if something had to be replaced with the uh, stormwater system, we can't do both. And that's why we're seeing a lot of potholes uh, that's been on a tenant. And uh, that's why I'm requesting that we uh, move forward with these other positions uh, in order to keep up with the demand. Now, we, we, you all been generous in the equipment uh, replacement. But however, what good is the equipment if we don't have a manpower?
So, and I, I was actually kind of going off this a little bit, Mr. uh, Griffin earlier today. Um, because it looked like I remember us, council, and, and you all remember this conversation as well. Prior to COVID, during the last budget setting, did we not give you some positions? Did you not hire in those positions?
I did not get any authorized positions from last year.
There, there were no, there were no authorized positions added. We reclassified a position for tree circle.
Now, I don't know whether you all are, are familiar with uh, it's one of our mechanic Charles Bunges. That's the guy that, he's a mechanic. He has been maintaining the city facilities and the parks cleanup.
Okay, I'd like to get one.
As a mechanic. Now, uh, this guy need to be in the mechanic shop. And this could be a reason why Chief, when I came there complaining about the mechanic shop not functioning as we are, are producing it there. Well, you got one of your thirty-year period mechanic uh, cleaning bathrooms, changing light bulbs. So, so this is why I said we need to put it, get him back in the shop. And we need to put in, in place a facility maintenance worker that can go around and do these uh, hand-to-man uh, jobs and duties for all the facilities.
What, one of the things that I want to make sure y'all heard what Tim said and, and this, I, I knew that these chickens were gonna come home to roost. Uh, in the, in the budget prior to the first budget that I did as interim city manager, uh, when the Stormwater Enterprise Fund was created, five people were transferred from the street department to stormwater. So you created a new department and a new enterprise fund with no new people. You just simply took five from another department and moved them over. So really and truly, if you look at that from a logical standpoint, uh, that did decrease the street department by five folks. Now, Tim's point of them coming together is well-made and they do, they do oftentimes come together. But if you, if you, if you create a whole new department and then split your staff between those two departments and it was the staff that you already had, uh, then that, that could cause some issues. And Tim, Tim and I have had that conversation uh, quite often. For example, uh, if we had some additional folks in the street department, uh, in- instead of the utility maintenance people having to fill and tamp holes when they make a street cut, then we could call street department folks out to do that. And then the utility maintenance people could move on to the next place. Um, so uh, that, that, that I think is, is an issue for um, for public works. And basically, the positions that Tim has uh, requested, uh, the, the two street maintenance workers would be two people that would replace two of those five that transferred over to the stormwater area. Um, so, you know, that, that, his, his request, everybody's request made logical sense to me. But his really did because a new department was created. Um, and uh, and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna see what we can do, especially about seeing if we can't have somebody for him dedicated to downtown because the downtown merchants are wearing me out. Uh, and uh, we'll, we'll have to see what we can do there. So uh, hi- his, his workload did increase with stormwater to some extent because I think most of that was being contracted out before he came. But the staff was basically cut in half for the street department. So um, I, I, I think that was probably done from a funding standpoint to be able to pay for some of those people with enterprise funds. And that's not a bad idea. But you can't leave a lurch in another department that's being paid for by general funds uh, for that to happen. So um, I, I wanted to make sure all of you heard his point about that because that point is a very, very, very valid point.
Mr. uh, Griffin, have we started to use that new paver that you all purchased to, to resurface potholes?
The paver uh, has not come in yet and the uh, pothole patcher, uh, probably we found out what Tim about three weeks ago, may not be here until about September because the um, truck plant that builds the truck that the patcher goes on is down. So to answer your question, no, we, we ordered a paver and we also ordered a pothole patcher. Uh, but the paver has not come in yet. It will be utilized obviously as soon as it gets here. Unfortunately, our patching truck's probably gonna be September before it gets here because of what's happening with the Freightliner uh, company, so.
And, and is that those persons that patch the road? I guess this is a question for both of you all. Is that a part of some of the people that you had to divide up?
That, yeah, absolutely. That's, that's part of the street crew.
It's like you're getting worn out by the downtown areas. I'm, I'm likewise uh, council, I'm sure is being worn out about the the potholes and everything else that go along with it.
We're, we're actually gonna look at, uh, actually gonna look at con- uh, we're gonna look at contracting some of that out with some SPOSS funds. That was not our original plan, but when our truck got delayed, uh, we're gonna try to get those taken care of uh, more quickly uh, since our truck is not gonna be in until September, so.
Uh, one thing I want to mention is that when, uh, when that enterprise fund was created, it kind of, I don't know if it was completely spelled out or anything of that nature. But you know, it seemed like we were Robin Peter to pay Paul to, to get these things started. But it was kind of my understanding that as we went into uh, at least the first full year of collection or the, or the, uh, no longer than the second year, that some of this was going to start to kind of even out. That uh, we would have a um, a few positions that would either be created or filled or whatever as funding became available. Am I wrong in that, in remembering that or?
Well, I was not a city manager then, but I think that was the way it was presented. And, and I think, I think that is an accurate presentation. Uh, the, the unfortunate thing is we had so much infrastructure to catch up on uh, in the first year and a half that the collections have been happening. Uh, that money has not been there to add those positions. What really should be happening is the enterprise fund uh, adding a position once a year back to stormwater. And then one of those positions that was moved to stormwater goes back to the street department. And uh, and I think that, I think that ultimately will happen. Uh, I think it's just gonna take a little bit longer than, than maybe we initially, or it was initially thought just simply because we've, we've had so many situations. Um, what is it Shay? We, we, we've already spent almost three hundred thousand dollars this year on stormwater infrastructure replacement. Uh, and uh, and most of those were emergency situations that had to happen because the street was collapsing where the um, where the pipe had, had collapsed. So I think we'll get to that point. Ms. Chambers, I think it's maybe just gonna take us a little bit longer. point. Ms. Chambers, I think it's maybe just gonna take us a little bit longer than was anticipated because of, of the infrastructure replacements that we've had to, to jump into pretty quickly.
Well, unfortunately, because we never have made it a priority over the years, there's gonna be more and more emergency situations that are gonna be created every year. So it's, yeah, you're right.
If you want to see a beautiful Stormwater project, go over to Pine Valley Road in Carrington Woods. They just finished a project over there last week, about a week, about two weeks ago now, and put in a double vault with riprap, and, and has, has water moving from about halfway through Carrington Woods all the way to the pond. Unfortunately, we got the other half of Carrington Woods to deal with now, don't we, Tim?
Yes, sir. That's just the beginning.
Good job. Good job. I did go out and look at it, Mr. Griffin, Mr. Thomas. Looks really good.
Any other questions for Mr. Thomas? Well, we have one more person here to speak with us, and that's our water and sewer director, Robert Hadden. So, Robert, the floor is yours.
I mute yourself, Mr. Hadden.
Good evening, everyone. I'll try to make this short and sweet. I will say that I'm excited with, about the water and sewer area, or the plans we have in the future. But I do express everyone else's concern with our salary, even though I may not have put that in the budget. But I am requesting two more operators for the wastewater treatment plant, because we are currently manning that treatment plant 16 hours a day, and it is operating 24 hours a day. So we desperately need someone there from midnight to eight in the morning. As of right now, EPD does not require us to do that, but I'm pretty sure.
Hold it one second, Mr. Hadden. Mr. Brinko, could you please mute yourself?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That worked. Currently, EPD does not require us to man that facility 24 hours, but we're probably one of very few in the state that have that privilege. So I would foresee that coming in the near future. And we would definitely need those extra operators to man that facility 24 hours a day. We're also asking for three more members in the maintenance department because of the duties of Central State Hospital system that we've taken over. I'm not real sure how many miles of water and sewer line that are over there, but this, as you all know, it was a city within itself. And, and we have, we've done very well with maintaining that, but it's still running our people pretty thin. That's really all I have to request. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I will say that Robert and I have had a conversation in terms of, of manning the waste treatment plant 24 hours a day. While EPD does not require it, that is something that keeps both of us awake at night. But we are looking at the potential, at least initially, to, to be able to put some new SCADA equipment in, possibly with ARPA money that will enable the water treatment operator to monitor the waste treatment plant.
Mr. Director, hold on. If you're not speaking, please mute your phone, because there's been a lot of background discretion in the conversation, and we can't really hear the speaker open, your background noise. And this is an official meeting, so please mute yourself.
So we are, we are, we are looking at that. But I think Robert's point is well-made, that I think we're not too many years away from EPD requiring to have somebody at that plant 24/7. So that would be something that we would need to, to plan for down the road. But the SCADA system would do a lot more for us than that. And we'll be looking at, at doing that with possibly some ARPA money. Any questions or comments from Mr. Hadden?
This is for you, Mr. Griffin. You had mentioned that our last budget cycle, that looking at the possibility of trying to get two maintenance crews formed, or a second one, or half a one, or something. I can't, I can't really remember exactly what it was, but do you remember that conversation?
I, I do, I do remember that conversation. And it was, it was, it was.
I was hoping I did.
It was at a minimum one and a half crews, and possibly two.
That is something that we may be trying to, to look at, to try to help alleviate some of the workload, especially at Central State.
Well, we, we are. One of the things you have to remember is, we, we are just about to complete our first budget year of, of most of those buildings at Central State that are not still, that are still state-owned, it being metered and generating revenue from there. So that, that will, I think that will give us an opportunity to do that, maybe at least get another half crew available sometime during the, the coming budget year, maybe beginning in January. But we haven't even, what, Robert, we, we metered, was it 18 buildings that belonged to the state? Did I have that number right?
There was quite a few. And, and all of those buildings were large buildings. You had the Cook Building, the correctional part of it was not the state, but you had Arnold Building, Allen Building, Ballin State Prison, Geo Prison, which, you know, all of those started paying.
And all of those are, have started, obviously, generating revenue. Unfortunately, for, for Cook, Geo, and Ballin State Prison, we had to spend $70,000 in an emergency situation to get water to them back in, back in October. So I, I think we'll be able to do that, at least another, another half crew. And Tim didn't even mention stormwater issues at Central State. We've got, we've got stormwater issues at Central State as well. It's just, just like water and sewer issues. So, you know, the kitchen project's online now. They're gonna be a fairly heavy water user, so that's gonna be helpful. So I, I think we'll be able to do that in this budget year, because the revenue will be generated out there.
I got, I got one last quick question, then I'll hush for the evening. But, and I don't want answers. But if you're a department head, you can shake your head up and down. I, I am seeing over and over and over in different industries, the inability to be able to find people to work. And I'm, I'm assuming we're, we're gonna be seeing some, or already seeing some of the same situation about trying to fill vacancies in, in employment or whatever. So I'm, I'm seeing some heads shaking up and down. So I'm, I, I don't, I don't know what that's gonna entail for us in the, in the short term, of even if we can create some positions, you know, we're gonna find somebody that actually wants to work anymore. Tough situation right now, guys.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
The national trend is about a year and a half.
Really?
And then the employees may pack up and leave, go somewhere else. With that being said, you gotta recruit, target, you gotta have targeted recruiting, and that targeted recruiting is certainly buttressed by what you're offering them. And some of it's soft issues. Now, in the fire service, people, you let people wear beards and things like this. That would be the soft sale to do it. But you gotta really target personnel now.
Okay.
Chief, you did that so smoothly. Tried to show his better side. Did y'all notice that? He put his hand on his face. Was he trying to show your good-looking side to you?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Good job. Good job.
Hey, Hank, since you brought up the Central State, now that wasn't, that's not what us maintaining the Central State. You know, we, I think last year, you and I talked, spoke about having about four to six additional guys just to man up the Central State.
Just to catch up Central State?
Yes, sir. That's just, they'll be designated to that here. But it's not, it doesn't include this increase here for possession.
How many was that, Mr. Thomas?
It was four to six. That's just the man up. You talking about a total entity of its own, you know, just the Central State. Now, it depend on the severity of the, the issues that was, uh, Stormwater, we, we would go out and address it as we can. But most of the time, it's on the background.
Mr. Tim, I sold myself short. I should have went last.
Hey, you gave me something to piggyback on. Thank you, chief.
Well, we so appreciate you guys staying apart and jumping in tonight and giving us an update on your departments and what you are looking for. This is something Mr. Griffin and I had spoke on a while back, about having you all do this. And Dr. Lee, I saw you chimed in as well on email to say you thought this was needed.
If you all give me the opportunity to be a part.
Come before your council and express to us what, you know, as chief, I'm gonna take his, his word, that pie in the sky. I don't know what piece of the pie in the sky you're gonna get, but we appreciate you all for coming to us and letting us know your needs. So I think, Mr. Griffin, is that the last person we have to?
It is the last person. I'll just say, if you all give me the opportunity to be a part of the next budget process, we will actually have true budget hearings with all the department heads coming to address y'all. So we'll get started in that, because I, that, tonight, that has proved to me that I think that would be valuable, so.
We very much appreciate this, this opportunity. Yeah. Something different for us.
And I, I don't have anything else but to answer y'all's questions, Mayor.
Well, I think I'm just gonna say, is there any questions from anyone else on the discussion tonight?
Question. I just wanted to thank everyone for sharing and listening to our questions and give us answers. We really do appreciate that, to give a different perspective as for just looking at the paper. It's a bit different.
I do have one question, Mayor, and that is, our, our next work session for the budget is our regularly scheduled work session on May 11th. Is that the next time y'all want to meet on the budget, or do you want to meet prior to that?
Council, do you want to email him on that, since it's so many of us who don't want to give different responses?
Okay.
How about let's just email him?
Just email me tomorrow and let me know, because if it's gonna be before that May 11th meeting, we'll need to get it set up tomorrow.
Oh, okay. Mr. Griffin, I have your phone handy right after the meeting. Any other questions, concerns, or comments anybody want to address? Is this the time? Mr. Steve, you already got your one up tonight. You didn't hear me when I said that. Anybody else?
Just again, to echo the thoughts already expressed here by other members of council, how very much we appreciate having the opportunity to hear from all these department heads about their needs. This is important that we hear it from y'all. You know, getting, getting a report, or, or a one-page letter, or even a longer report, doesn't really, doesn't really hold the same weight as hearing it from each of you directly. And I appreciate you taking the time to be here with us, to share with us your needs and your thoughts. We certainly will take all of this into consideration as we go into the budgeting process.
Okay. With that being said, and please, with having all the department's head on, please let everyone know that you come into contact within your community, that we are, are trying to staff Central State Hospital. They are reaching out, and they need at least, I'm gonna say, 60 employees, six or eight of them being cooks for the kitchen, and Fouts Brothers as well. Was it Fouts Brother, Mr. Griffin? I think it was Fouts Brother.
Fouts Brother, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Spread the word. And then Navisant called me on today, and, and so spread the word that they are giving COVID vaccines at the hospital on Fridays. And so she's gonna get with me, Mr. Griffin, and I'm gonna get with you and see if we can create some space to help with that. So nothing else being said, then, if I can get a motion to adjourn?
I think Ms. Shinholster.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I know you didn't hear me. I spoke with the HR manager out at the, what's the name of it, at Central Kitchen?
The Kitchen Bureau.
The Food Service. And she did tell me she was very concerned, because she said that whatever was in the Ballin Bulletin was erroneous, when they reported that they needed, I think it was like 80 personnel. And, and now, I think you stated 60, but she told me that it is not nearly that number. She had contacted the Ballin Bulletin to let them know that that was, and hopefully, they're gonna come out this week with a correction on that. They don't need that many. They are in need of employees, but it's not as many as was reported previously. She appreciates everything, everything that we have said, but she did say that that was erroneous. And they have, they are recruiting constantly, and they have received a lot of, have taken in a lot of new staff. So she didn't want to deceive the public into thinking that they needed that many employees, because they don't. So hopefully, they'll get it right in the paper this week.
So that, but that was, Mr. Couch gave me the number of 50. I think that's what I gave at the last meeting, 50 and eight cooks or something like that. And I just went to nine, I'm gonna round it up to 60. But yes, I saw that article from Ballin Bulletin. I don't know where Chris got that information from. None of it was as stated from the meeting, so.
She said a lot of it was erroneous, and, and they have asked them to correct it this week, so that, you know, hopefully, they'll get that word out to people as well.
Okay. All right. Thanks so much. So there again, can I get a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Second.
I'll be motioning second. Is Mr. De Nieuwdrad, did he, did he get that, Mr. Griffin?
Yes, ma'am, I have it.
All right, then. You want to call the roll on that one, or you?
We're good, guys.
All right. Mrs. Chambers said we are good to go. So you all have a wonderful night. Thank you for your time. See you on the next meeting.
Good night, y'all.
Good night.